Good afternoon. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Today is Thursday, May 11th, 2023. The time is 5:38 PM. And the meeting is taking place at City Hall Building, 100 South Monroe Street, Eagle Pass, Texas. We will start by establishing quorum. Commission member Doris Salinas Sanchez is present. Commission member Tiffany Velazquez Sanchez is present, and myself as well is present. Aaron Valdez and Kenneth Gross are absent. We will... Quorum is present, so we'll move to citizens' communication. Madam Secretary, did anybody sign up for citizens' communication?
No, there's none.
Alright, so then we'll close citizens' communication and move to selection of chairperson. Would the Commission... Are we allowed to table the item again, or do we...
It's up to you.
There is quorum, so you can vote on it.
You can choose to vote or table.
Would the Commission prefer to table the item when we have more people, or...
Do you want to do it? When we get...
Okay.
I'm happy with whatever we have.
Alright. No. So we'll make a motion... I'll make a motion to table the selection of the chairperson. All those in favor say aye. Oh, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Commissioner Salinas. All those in favor say aye.
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 Selection of vice-chairperson. Our motion to table that item as well. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to minutes. Approval of the minutes of the April 13, 2023 meeting. Are there any questions from the Commission on the minutes?
No.
No.
And just corrections that we discussed on page 3 and 4. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Salinas Sanchez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Motion passes. Next item, public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed final replat of Lot 21 in Block 2 of Loma Bonita Heights, subdivision Unit 1, including: 1. A subdivision bearing from the preliminary plat requirement of City of Eagle Pass Court of Ordinance, Chapter 23, Section 23-36A; and 2. A sidewalk waiver, including curb and gutter from Section 23-64, governing sidewalks, closing of public hearing and possible action. We'll open the public hearing at 5:41 PM.
So what you have before you is a replat application submitted by Tech Services. Property owner being Rosio Azmin Mendoza. Location of property, 1789 Bianca Drive. So typically when we have these type of replats is because the property owner wants to subdivide to obtain an additional service, water sewer service, as the reason behind the replat. The zoning... There's no zoning as it's in the ETJ, but it does meet or exceeds the R1 Dwelling District. The site is located within area that features residential developments, and the property is currently served by public and franchise utilities. We did send out notices as required by our charter. With this application, they're requesting a variance to proceed directly to final, which we're recommending approval or granting of the bypassing to preliminary... to final, going directly to final. They've also requested a sidewalk waiver, which we are recommending denial, and that includes curb and gutter off of a section off of Hilltop Circle. They will have to... Or recommendation is for the applicant or the property owner to build the sidewalk and that section of the curb and gutter. Here's the plat zoomed in. As you can see, there's a existing residence, and here at the bottom corner is a double white mobile home in existence. Here you have the preliminary plat. And here's a site view of the property. Or this is the residence, and this is a mobile home. As you can see, there's already curb off of Bianca, but there's no sidewalk. And off of Hilltop, Hilltop you do have a section of the curb, but they need to run it all the way through the perimeter of the site property. So the city is recommending to... Oh, I did not. So this one here, we had already brought in before PNC and City Council, and it also was approved by county commissioners. With the same recommendation that they build the improvements, they were... Same recommendation that the applicant was not able to build, or did not have the funds to build the improvements. So years passed, and so they're coming back and asking for the same.
So they just didn't build back then?
They didn't build the improvements.
How long ago was that?
I think it's been a couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, the application, if you look at it in the documents, dated October 2020. So yeah, this came through a while back. We reviewed it. We brought... Maybe Ms. Salinas Sanchez, I don't know if you recall.
Yes.
You were already here, so they're asking to bring it back, I guess, to reevaluate if we would consider the sidewalk variance.
Okay. But as what you're recommending is to move forward with the approval of the variance or the... To replat, but...
With the condition that they...
With the condition that they will do the sidewalk.
That they build the sidewalk and that portion of the curb and gutter off of Hilltop.
Which was the same the previous time we presented. So the recommendation from our side is remaining the same. They're, I guess, just hoping it will be reconsidered.
So our recommendation, Planning Department's recommendation, is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend Eagle Pass City Council: 1. Grant the subdivision variance to proceed directly to final replat without first having obtained preliminary replat approval, as required by City of Eagle Pass Court of Ordinance, Section 23-36A; and 2. Deny a sidewalk waiver request, including curb and gutter, as it does not conform with the criteria set forth in Section 23-64, governing sidewalks; and 3. To grant final approval of the proposed final replat of Lot 21 and Block 2 of Loma Bonita Heights subdivision Unit... We should be Unit 3, if I'm not mistaken. I can't see. I want to say it's Unit 3.
On the application, it says 1.
Okay, so it is 1. I'm sorry then.
No, but you may be right.
Unit 1.
On...
It says Unit 1. It's Unit 1. It's Unit 1.
Yeah. On terrestre, they say it says Unit 1.
Subject to the plat complying with the provisions of Article 3 of the City of Eagle Pass Court of Ordinance, Chapter 23, governing procedures and specifications for final plats, including the following conditions: A sidewalk being installed along the perimeter of the parcel adjacent to Bianca Drive and Hilltop Circle prior to plat recordation; and 2. Also to construct concrete curb and gutter along the site property adjacent to Hilltop Circle prior to plat recordation. And that's basically... That concludes our report.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to address the Commission on this item? If not, any questions from the Commission?
No, no questions. Are we live? Do we have some people?
We are recording, but we are not live.
Okay.
Anything further from the Planning Department?
Actually, I forgot to mention that we did send out, I believe it was 72 notices. We didn't receive any in return.
Alright, so if no further questions, we'll close the public hearing at 5:48 PM. Is there a motion on this item?
I motion to approve the recommendation of the City of Eagle Pass Planning and Zoning Department to approve the...
As presented, or...
As presented, yes.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Salinas. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. Any further comments, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 3. Public hearing on the request submitted by PW Holdings 23 LLC for the rezoning of 2.114 acres located in Survey A, Abstract Number 1111, Maverick County, Texas, and being part of and out of Block A of Holly Park Subdivision, Unit 5, according to the map of recorded under envelope 48, Site B of the map records of Maverick County, Texas. For reference, said 2.114 acre tract being that certain called 2.1117 acre tract conveyed from Maxi Family Limited Partnership, a Texas Limited Partnership, to Daniel W. Hartman and wife, Irma Alicia Hartman, by warranty deed with vendor's lien, recorded under Book 560, Page 70 of the Official Public Records of Maverick County, Texas. Said 2.114 acre tract also being that certain called 2.117 acre tract conveyed from Kalik Development LLC to Luis E. Stock by warranty deed, recorded under Book 1876, Page 460 of the Official Public Records of Maverick County, Texas, from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B3 General Business District. Closing of public hearing and possible action. We'll open the public hearing at 5:50 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what you have before you is a rezon application submitted by PWS Holdings 23 LLC, property owner being Louis E. Stock and Vicky Elstock, trustees of the Stock Revocable Trust. We do have the applicant, both the applicant and the property owners, present. Property is located at 2423 East Main Street. The request is to rezon parcel from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B3 General Business District. Here you have an aerial map of the site. Property is located, or the subject property is located in between what we have as Wendy's and the Pizza Hut. It was a former motel hotel. So this is the current state of the site. Photographs. Currently has a driveway, Tech Dot driveway, or two actually, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Current use, like I said, it's a vacant lot. Proposed use will be an express car wash, which we... It's... I don't recall the name.
Tommy's Express.
Tommy's Car Wash. Thank you for that. Acres, 2.114 acres, square feet, 9,000, 92,089, I believe. Yes, 92,089 square feet. Here's more photos of the site. Here's what we have. We call the legacy map. It's not an actual recorded plat, but it's close to a recorded plat. So here's the actual property. Here you have a proposed preliminary site plan. Zoomed in, site plan. So the proposed development will comply with our building codes, fire codes, utilities, and all that good stuff. Here you have a copy of the master plan. This is a master plan, and this is our future or master plan. As you can see, it's zoned as B1, and it does conform with the B3 as well. So the Planning Department recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the City Council prepare and adopt an ordinance granting a zoning district change from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B3 General Business District for a property legally known as 2423 East Main Street. I'm not going to read the entire legal description.
Win or lose.
So there you have it. So we did publish in the newspaper as required, no notices are required to be sent out, being that it's already zoned commercial, just for the record. For that, I'll just open it up for questions or...
Alright, anybody in the audience that wishes to address the Commission on this item?
Yeah, I've got a quick presentation that I could run through here for you. So my name is Tanner Brandt with Christians and Companies. We're going to be doing the development process and building this car wash on this site. So Tommy's Express is a franchise that works local franchisees. We'll be building it for a group based out of San Antonio. So a Tommy's Express car wash has state-of-the-art technology. You'll see in some of the later pictures, we've got the conveyor belt system as you drive up. Instead of like the older car washes where they would have a chain and roller that's going over your tire, this is more of a conveyor belt that just pulls your car through the wash. And also, as you drive up into the wash, it uses license plate reader technology. So when you are going to use... The main business model is based on monthly memberships, so you just pay a monthly fee, and you can get unlimited washes. So as you would drive up into the pay lanes here... So there's the three pay lanes, the one closest to the building. This is a cashier that takes cash and credit card, and these two are for Tommy Club members. So if you sign up for this membership, pay the monthly fee, you can get unlimited washes. In the Tommy Club app, you will, you know, submit all your information, and your license plate number will be included as well. So as you drive up, if you're a Tommy Club member, to either of these lanes, it will read your license plate and allow you to go directly through out of the fast pass lane. So that's very, you know, the technology is very good where you can have all of your preferences for how you want your car washed in the app, and you can tell, you know, it knows exactly the specifications of your car, and, you know, what your car needs for each specific wash. These are environmentally friendly. We reclaim about 30%, 30, 33% of all water that's used in the wash. It goes through a sand oil separator and a three-part, I guess you can see it in the site plan. Right in here, there are these tanks that are underground that work the water through, get rid of, you know, anything that's, any sand, oil, dirt, anything, and then it reuses the water on the lower portion of the wash. As you can see, we have plenty of stacking space here. It takes about two and a half minutes to get a car through the wash, and you can have, this is a 130-foot model, I believe, and you can get up to five cars on the conveyor belt at a time. So this is our site plan here. We've got full access here, and then just an exit only that we're showing here. We have run this by Tech Dot, and they have not had any issues with it, so we've been working closely with them. Enter the wash here, go in, come through. These are all vacuums that are free for customers. Here, this is a conceptual layout of a take five oil change that's... I know the... We were supposed to just show... I don't know exactly where they are. That's a separate deal from ours, but they wanted, I know the city wanted to see kind of the concept plan with that on there. So we will be replating this lot to create this lot line here, but I guess I'll just run through a couple more of the pictures here. But we think it's the best wash on the market, and it's a good-looking, good-looking building, and I think it'll be an upgrade for the vacant lot that's sitting there now. So this is our prototypical elevations, but we will comply with any of the building codes that are needed. So thank you for your time, and available for any questions.
Any questions from the Commission?
Yeah.
Just gonna ask, around that property, are they all B3s?
There are several that are B3, there are some that are B1s.
There is a mixture here.
You do have multifamily located to the rear.
Right behind it.
Alright, so I guess if no further questions, we'll close the public hearing at 5:59 PM. And is there a motion on the item?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Salinas Sanchez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Just to be clear, the motion was to...
To approve the recommendation.
Present it.
Congratulations, for success.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, by when do you estimate that the project is going to be completed?
So we think we could start construction by probably end of summer, and then it's probably, you know, probably August, September timeframe, and then it's about eight to nine months for building after that.
Thank you.
Item number four, discussion and possible action on the six-month extension request by Tech Services for the final plat of Benito Garcia subdivision.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Velazquez. This item is fairly straightforward. They're asking for an extension. They have previously come... This is a... Well, let me get just a little detail before I get into it. An application by Tech Services. Property owner is Benito Rosario Garcia at 3401 Del Rio Boulevard and 3427. Two properties that are included with us. So we have brought this before the board and council previously. It was approved with the condition, though, that they connect to sewer. The nearest main, though, is on the other side of Del Rio Boulevard. You can see the star here on the west side, or the side closer towards Rio Grande, but the nearest main to connect is on the east side. So the applicant, due to this investment required to bore under and make a connection under the highway like that, they are asking for some additional time. So essentially, they keep their approved plat status, but before we would actually record it, they would need to complete that sewer connection before we would actually take it to the county clerk for recordation. So again, they're asking for a six-month extension, keep that plat approval while they continue to try to make that, the improvements required as part of that condition. And so the recommendation here is to grant their six-month extension. And again, the main condition that's pending before they can record their plat is that they connect to the main sewer line. Any questions on this one?
Any questions from the Commission?
Yeah.
And the six months, they ask for the six months, or is that like a standard that the Planning Department uses, they ask for the extension?
It is, yeah, it's a pretty standard extension amount of time. I don't... It's a good question. I don't recall. They can ask for more, because that's the max.
The quote says it's max.
Okay, so that's basically the standard amount, the max that they could ask for.
Is this the second extension they request, the first one?
So after, I believe they have, I don't know, was it one year from the time that it was first approved, they had a certain amount of time already, a certain grace period there to work with it and complete it, and so now they're getting closer to that period. Now they're asking for the extension.
I believe it's in June, their expiration, so they came before, way before.
And is there a limit on the...
Extension.
Number of extensions that they can ask?
It doesn't specify. It doesn't specify.
Yeah, I believe they can request another extension if necessary at this point.
We've had a few that they've asked for, for two extensions.
We'll research that a little bit further for next meeting.
The last one we did was Castle Rock 3, I believe, or 2. I can't recall, but we had...
Question? If not, is there a motion on the item?
A motion to approve the extension.
A motion by Commissioner Salinas Sanchez. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, discussion of suggested revisions related to the amendment of Article 5 of the Parkland Dedication Ordinance.
So this item, in front of you, there's a stack of sheets, about 11 sheets, and this is the latest revision. So we had a parkland, an ordinance amendment put together a few months ago. Since then, we've done some reviewing here internally, Planning Department, Parks primarily looking at this, and then we sent those revisions back to Dr. Crumpton, who was assisting us as a consultant and assisting us review this. So you see on the right column of the sheets that are before you, and were emailed as well if you'd like to review them digitally, there's just a couple of new comments we wanted to share with you. And basically opened it up to see if you had questions with it, or would like some additional information. One key thing that I did want to just point out is, at the end in the sheets, the last document includes an appendix, Appendix 8. There's some, there's a few different changes in the verbiage throughout the new section or proposed section, but I think the key thing that I want to make sure the Commission is very aware of, and obviously the public as well through this public meeting, is the dollar amount. So currently, it's $1,150, $1,150 per lot in parkland fee if they're not going to be doing land. So the fee in lieu amount on a per-lot basis is $1,150. Based on this current draft version, and this was what a lot of... This was presented, this was provided to us by Dr. Crumpton with a lot of general information, without, using a lot of specifics for our local costs, local park improvement costs and land costs, basically used, you know, just widely available statewide information. So with that, the bottom is really the key numbers, and that's the single-family unit, SFU. The way this new version is broken out, or would work, is two components, a land component and an improvement component. So the land, the fee in lieu for land would be $555 per lot, and $972 for the park improvement per lot, for a total of $1,527. And again, comparing that to what we currently have, which is $1,150 per lot, so it is an increase of roughly 30%. And so that's a key number we wanted to point out. Now, the other thing, just to give you a reference point, we had a Viero Mel Park Improvements designed recently. That's two acres, a little under two acres, so it's not a large park, but the cost estimates for the improvements that the city is looking to do there were in the ballpark of about $600,000. So, and that's not including the land, because in this case, that parkland dedication was the land. So the city got the land, and then needed to budget for the improvements. We are now working at that. And so if you factor in roughly $600,000 improvements, and then another amount for the land, you're looking at maybe $700,000 or a little more than $700,000 for a typical park. Now, if you, if you divide that out, so usually it's kind of a standard basis, it's based like on 100 lots. Usually about for every 100 lots, we would be looking for new parkland to service all those new homes, all the new residents of that area. So just some rough math, taking, let's say, $700,000 divided by those 100 lots, in order for those, for that developer and those homes to cover their own costs, we're talking about $7,000 or so dollars per lot to pay for their own park. So with the 1,500 that we're looking at here, we're nowhere near cost, but we're a little bit closer than the 1,150. So those are just a little bit of numbers for you to think about.
Do we have any feedback on what we think on that amount? Is that too high or too low? I know you mentioned the previous cost.
It's, we're in the stage of taking the input. You know, we have people very experienced in the real estate side of things. Obviously, the more fees and cost you add, the more expensive it is for somebody to get into their house. So there's, it's a two-way street here. Yes, I think from the city side, we would love to be able to collect more of that fee from the development so that they cover the cost of their own neighborhood park. But at the same time, we have to be factoring in the already fairly high cost of real estate and buying involvement in our town. So that's where we're open to what the commission thinks. We're obviously gonna be taking the comments from council and ultimately they'll be making the call whether they think it's suitable to, to increase that amount for fee in lieu or park, park and park improvement dedication amount. So, yeah, I mean, I think there's still a pretty wide gap between, so maybe working a little bit closer. But again, we have to be very conscious of what that means to the cost of, basically I would assume dollar per dollar would be passed on to the buyer of a home.
So what happens to, if you have a master plan, it's, let's say, two, three, four phases. And it's obviously more than 100 lots, how has that been worked on?
But they build in phases.
Yeah, but they'll submit for 23 lots, 25 lots, 30 lots.
39, 30, 35.
Not to meet the 50 to where they have to dedicate, but how would that work?
I thought the ordinance reads like you would request a master plan for the whole thing and then you would dedicate it at the beginning.
So it's gonna be land, it would, the land would be, I mean, if it's cash, if it's cash in lieu, the money is based on the phases. So if it's only 39 lots in the first one, it's 39 lots times whatever amount is decided here. They wouldn't need the whole master plan amount. If it's, if they plan to do land, then we would expect them to figure the area that they plan and they probably would set aside that whole land because it's not like they can use it and then later dedicate it for land, parkland. So for phasing, I think it would mostly impact the cash and that would be due in phases, not all of this.
Yeah.
And yes, we do have the master plan to at least know what we would be looking at for all of the phases.
Right now, they're currently, you said it's 1,000?
150.
Per lot?
Yes, and that one is, it's currently a flat amount, parkland, that's just, just for land. Within this new one and with what a lot of cities have moved to is a portion for land and a portion for improvements because like in the Villarreal example I gave, so it's currently just land, so we've got land. But there's no funds to do anything with it.
So you just got land and no money, right?
Right, and so sometimes it takes the city a few years to budget or borrow money to then it puts something on that. So in that case, that area was vacant for a few years. Similarly, in Bass subdivision, Hunter Park area, about seven or so acres, I believe, is dedicated there. But the city hasn't budgeted and allocated funds to make those improvements, so it's just raw land still. So that's what, one of the changes with this is there's a portion of land and a portion for improvements because obviously it doesn't do the neighborhood or anybody good for just the vacant land to sit there. We're trying to address that with this component, this dual component.
Going back to what we were saying before, so with the, with the draft ordinance, can somebody just do, you were saying in phases, so is there a requirement that if you have a certain number of lots, you have to dedicate land?
That, that changes here in our current one, it 50 is the number. And under 50, they have, they're not required to do land, they can choose the option, the cash option. We're removing that, so it's basically just a straightforward, doesn't matter. They try to do 49 just to not meet that number, that's removed. So any amount per phase still is treated with the same rules.
But they have the option of doing either land or, or cash?
The city has the option to decide if cash, it's typically gonna be land with the improvement amount on top. But the city may be able to elect to just choose the cash for land and cash for improvement. Okay, so that's a good point, I just wanna make sure I clarify. So even if a developer does do land, the improvement amount still applies on top. So the city has some funds to go towards improving their land as well.
So I guess the improvement fee or whatever it's called, the development fee, that's always gonna be in place, no matter what they do.
That's right. The development component.
Which is?
972.
And this will also apply to the county, or you think in the ETJ, correct?
Yes, thanks for pointing that out. So the current ordinance and this ordinance does apply this to both city, inside city and ETJ. And that is another big factor for us to decide if we wanna keep it that way and the same amount for inside city or ETJ or potentially a reduced amount if it's ETJ county area.
And so what are the next steps with this? Once we talk, have questions or add information, is this still gonna go back to P&amp;Z or does this just move on?
Well, we haven't scheduled to go to council for our first reading in June. So at that point, they'll have probably a lot of questions about it. They may want more input from P&amp;Z and wanna hear what you, what comments, you know, or recommendation you have for them on this topic. But that would be just the first reading, they may approve it or say table it. So there'll still be some time here to modify, we wanna change the current verbiage. So one thing is to say, you know what, we'll just keep our current ordinance as is, we're gonna forget this draft. Maybe we're not ready to make this change, keep it as is, that's a potential. Or say, we like this one as is, this new modification, we'll take it like it is. Or take this with various changes before accepting that. So there's a couple routes that this could go.
When you mention the cost, just to maintain those parks, do we have several estimates from different sources or is it, how do you calculate it?
To develop the park?
Yeah.
That was just a recent, to build a new park, to develop a new and maintenance would be
Different.
Different. And I think a lot of time, we'll typically have a lot of maintenance built into our general fund annual budget. But I think the big thing about the parkland dedication is when a new subdivision comes in, getting them a park and how do we come up with a cost to get that new park for the newly built area? So that number that I gave was just most recent, to be able to provide current cost estimate. We could go back to older parks too and give you a couple more options for next time if you're interested to have a few, a few more to consider what they, what they cost.
But this is the newest one?
That's the most, that's the latest, yeah.
We actually have this item coming up on the 25th as well.
Villarreal is the...
No, the, the public hearing for this particular item.
Well, because we have the special meeting, gives us another chance. So we have maybe a couple of weeks now between here and the fourth Thursday when we have a special you know, break comments, that'll still give, before we have the city council meeting. So we will be able to take those to city council, if you wanna share anything for us to relay to them.
Well, I had a few questions. So the ordinance says that the dedication fees and development fees cannot be used for maintenance. Is that correct?
The section you're looking at is, is that from current ordinance or this?
The draft. I think it mentions like improvements. So all parkland, page two.
It says two, uh-huh. Use of parkland dedication fees, it's a, mention of...
Letter C.
Yeah.
It says it can be used for acquisition, leasing, development, improvement or enhancement. So maintenance is not mentioned. I don't know if you, would be considered enhancement, but maybe just a clarification.
Yeah, I think what we're, what we're looking at here is to focus these funds for new parks or new amenities, adding new things, so not just...
Please on a use of maintenance. Operation, the equipment associated with operation.
That would mean these fees were to be put in a new playground, a new walking trail, new, not maintaining an existing playground or existing slides. And I, and I think that, I do, I think I agree with that, but I mean, it could, if we want to expand that a bit.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I agree with that as well.
Because I think where you may get a complaint is that say a park, a new subdivision comes in and they pay their fees, if it was allowed to do maintenance on some other park somewhere else, it would potentially get a complaint that like, why did my funds go elsewhere? So I think that's where it's designed for new type of improvements.
I had a kind of question regarding that. There's a section right to refund, I think it's towards the end. And I think it talks about how you have to spend the money in seven years. So then, when, when you collect the fees, you're gonna put them in a fund and you have to spend them in seven years. Can you, I guess clarify or ask if that money then collected from subdivision A can be spent on another subdivision? For acquiring land or developing a park?
So I talked to our finance director about that and the wording is open enough where you could. But apparent, our legal, we asked our legal counsel for some input on that. So apparently seems to be intended that you shouldn't, that it's meant to be used in the area where it was collected from. So subdivision fees were from Villarreal, you would spend those fees in that area for those residents to access them in a close proximity, not something across the other side of town. Legally, I think we would be okay with that. I think we could get, but the intent of it is to use them nearby.
There wouldn't be enough money though.
That's what's tough, is that you only have a portion, you need to come up with more, yeah.
And then maybe kinda tempting to see X amount of money and then just use part of it for whatever subdivision there or whatever, instead of using what's available. Feedback from developers on the draft, have we received any feedback?
Not yet, we wanted to take, I mean, I guess get a better feel. If, if this is something we are struggling considering making a change with or, or not. I don't know how you feel about it currently.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I don't think the developers are gonna be okay with it, with, with the proposal of improving 30% or 7,000 ain't, ain't gonna happen. Being realistically speaking, we, this is what we do, real estate. And that's the reason a lot of the developers and investors are moving to Del Rio and Nualde and other places. And if we really wanna create more jobs and making sure you collect more taxes, it's gotta be something reasonable. Because if it's 7,000 per lot, you're eating up all dirt.
No, I think that 7,000 was, that's what it would take to do the full, acquiring of the land and the park.
Yeah.
But the proposal is 1,500.
Which is still 7,000.
You, you feel as high to go from 1150 to the 1,500 is...
But they still have to pay the 972 even if they wanna either donate land. Because if they donate land, you're still gonna want to charge them the 972, which is close to 1,000. Know what I'm saying? And those two acre land, they can also fit other lots for building and creating more income. I mean, the way it is right now, it's not such a big difference of 1,100. But if it's still donating the land just to be in compliance and then still charging them close to 1,000 per lot, there might be something that you might wanna reconsider adjusting. Because that's not only on top of these, on top of what the water work system is charging them per lot. There's too many fees involved. I would say in order to, to get a better feel, it's having a, a meeting and see, I mean, this is for the benefit of the community and it's gonna be a win-win situation, but you don't wanna also scare away projects or developments. And, and they're, these are the people that are investing, you know, so might as well have an informal or formal, however you wanna call it, meeting with them and see. And I don't know if you have any other cities nearby that you're using as an example, like what, what are they doing in regards to the fees they're charging to new developments?
It'd be a good idea to kinda have a comparison to kinda see, are we too high, too low? And we'll kinda put it into perspective.
Yeah, because we had other situations where they either stopped, we have several of them that have stopped and they haven't even been able to move forward with those developments. And others, they'll rather go and, and buy lots or build outside of the park.
Good points, okay. So the next step, you want us to go ahead and schedule something, invite in developers, contractors or just developers, realtors, who do you think we should invite on that?
I would say before you invite them, do some due diligence or research on what Del Rio is doing, Nualde is doing and nearby, because they're gonna say, okay, you're basing off this, but because I, we see it every day, there's people building, I mean, maybe Del Rio would be a good course, but not Nualde, I don't see a lot of developments over there as far as subdivisions. Anything that's nearby, at least for them to see as comparison.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have a table with a comparison, yeah.
Something that you can share with them as facts, you know, this is what's going on here and there.
Okay, good comments, anything else, Commissioner?
Can, so let's say that whatever ordinance is, is adopted by the city, can the city accept deviations to the ordinance or exceptions to the ordinance?
Like in a case, so if this was adopted and then somebody, like a variance or?
Like a variance.
Yeah, kind of like a variance. And I think you had, you had a comment on that on letter, page five, letter G, on the 27%, that the park should be at least 27% on our main street or something like that. If, if that is not possible...
A subdivision variance would be possible.
Okay, so they can do a, request a variance.
They could request a variance.
And they, they can request a variance on any item on the ordinance?
Typically it would be part of their plat, so when you get the plat presentation, it would include with their request for variance for the 25% of perimeter abiding of public street or whichever, you know, in that, in that example.
The other question, when, when the land is dedicated, or I, I don't, I don't think I saw it in there maybe, but are you gonna require the developers to clear or clean or clean, there's debris or trees or whatever? Is it gonna be completely just the way it is or are you gonna require them to clean it up as part of the dedication?
It's typically dedicated naturally then.
Would it be something that would be beneficial?
Yeah, it's usually cleared.
Yeah, it's cleared.
If it's small, I mean, like Hunter, the Bass area.
Yeah, I know that one's kinda cleared.
So I think like Villarreal was cleared, I think when they did all that, they cleared that. So I guess it depends on the size and the type of park, but...
I don't know if you would wanna consider, I mean, maybe it is in there and I didn't see it, but if you wanna have it on the ordinance, that it should be cleared or whatever. I mean, maybe that's just a practice, but if it's not in there, maybe you're gonna have somebody that's not gonna do it.
How many acres for subdivision has to be donated?
How many acres?
Yeah, depending.
Two.
So in the, in this new wording, it states five, minimum five acres for parkland dedication. So that would mean in a lot of cases that they are not doing enough houses, the subdivision's not big enough, then it would fall into the fee in lieu category.
Okay.
But the wording is in a way that says, normally, I, I forget the exact term, but...
It's something like that, the city wouldn't normally accept.
Normally accept less than five acres, but the wording is so that there's flexibility. We wanna accept, say, a three acre, the city could choose to do so.
Can you be more specific? Because the way it is, the way it reads right now, it says five?
Right.
Well, it doesn't say minimum five, but it's, it's page four, letter A. Well, it doesn't say minimum five, but it, uh, it's, uh, page four, letter A. If it, I guess the city will not normally accept a dedication that is smaller than five acres.
I think that's too broad because you're not mentioning. I mean, sometimes we, we do have smaller subdivisions where there's like ten, fifteen acres, and if you wanna take one-third of it for dedication to a park.
But then that, that's when they, I don't know, want the fee.
Yeah, so.
But it's optional because we do have others like, um, um, in front of that elementary school, there's a smaller park. You know, you don't need five acres. On that Perfecto Mancha.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
See across the street from it, there's a smaller park. It's just like one block.
In front of Perfecto Mancha.
And it's just an example, one of the newest ones, you don't need five acres, it's not even.
I mean, I, I don't know who would challenge it, but I, I kind of see your point, cause it says it wouldn't normally accept, meaning that you could make the exception to change it to less than five, but then if you're always proving less than five, then that's not normal. So I, I don't know who would challenge that, but.
And then you're gonna have a lot of requests for exemptions, then it is gonna take a lot of time.
Everybody's gonna.
So I would say specifically mention and put categories like if it's X amount of lots, X amount of acreage that you're gonna develop, then X amount, in proportion. Because you don't really need five acres unless you're talking about, I don't know, how many phases.
And I guess the point was to keep a certain standard of the parks?
It's to keep a certain standard of maintenance. If you have a lot of pocket parks or small, you're sending your crews, uh, all over, you're having to move. So you lose a lot of time just to move from one to the other, so maintenance is a big part of that, bigger number. Uh, but yeah, the city would have the option to say, well, in this area, maybe it would only, they send a number of lots, it would only equal to two acre, uh, park. But there's no parks anywhere around there, so you know what, we want a two acre park there. Versus in another area, it's, it would equal that same two acre park, but there's already something nearby. In that case, we would say, we'll just take the fees in lieu because there's not a need for another small park, two acre park.
I don't think the fees are, the increase is bad. Significantly, I would say. I mean, where would we get the money then, for the park?
Well, that's the thing, if they're gonna build a park or not.
Cause I think I was doing the math, so.
Depends where it's looking, if you already have one close by.
With, with the draft.
You gotta do that math, so fifteen hundred divided by seven thousand roughly?
So if you're collecting about fifteen hundred cents a hundred, so it's like twenty, twenty-five percent, yeah.
So right now, a lot of times we'll do these big improvements when we go out for a bond, the city borrows money. And then that's when we, we can, we can do these big projects. But.
Cause then the other side of it is, if, if the city's doing that, then that also means that everybody paying more taxes.
All the taxpayers, the general taxpayer.
Can you check first what's the size of the acreage, uh, on that park, uh, across the street from Perfecto Mancha Elementary School?
That one was smaller, I think it's about one point five acres.
And that's the only park in that area, right?
And then you have all these developments and they have that one small park.
Across, uh, Masquitas, I think, like in the detention pond, they put like.
Yeah, but that's, that, I'm talking about this same subdivision. It's got faces.
It's fairly close to, um, yeah, the county park on, on Masquitas Road. And it's actually proximity wise, pretty close to the sports complex, so once that's, when the road is extended, that neighborhood should be able to get to the sports complex, fairly good, right now there's a, a canal, you can't really get there easily, but let me bring up the properties, like, you wanna see the, the acreage on that?
Yeah, just to get an idea. I don't know how the perimeter, how many houses on the first phase, you know. And there's some under development right now, behind the school. So. That was part of the Lewis Farm State subdivision, yeah.
Point three.
It's just one block.
Well, point twenty-nine seems like a lot.
Yeah, actually this, this, it's.
Yeah, it looks like maybe two lots.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
No, it's more. I guess just for a park, it looks very small.
That's, I would say that's the smallest one we have in, the smallest, one of the smallest parks I've seen. Our recent parks that we have.
It's a little, should be a little over an acre. Maybe one and a quarter or something.
Yeah, it's like a block. So it's like equivalent to two, four, six, eight. Well, nowadays they're not even point twenty-one acre lot, the, the.
I know, they're not point thirteen, point sixteen.
So it's about eight. They're giving up a lots. Nine, maybe put them at six thousand, I believe, it's too small.
Yeah, I believe this was, like you guys were mentioning, size for this first Fletcher, um, and Lewis development. And so then with all these future developments of Terra Verde. It's getting to be a little bit more peop, more population for that size of park.
Yeah, so there's a need of another one.
See, if you, if you look, you know, zoom out here, it's fairly close to the sports complex area. Once the road is there, it would be a walkable or bikeable route over here.
One point, one, one point fourteen, I think.
Mm-hmm, four, five.
One point five, let's say.
Okay, so any, um, between now and the special meeting, we'll bring a, we'll have a table with some comparable cities fees, so we can see how we compare, how we stack up.
How compare the rate?
The rate, we'll bring the rate in. I'm not sure if we can get in the, the workshop between now and then, but we'll, we'll at least reach out to five, ten, several people who are the usual, the usual developers to get some feedback, bring that before you. And then, uh, if you have more comments at that point, we'll be ready to take, take all that to city council in June.
So you think the change from a thousand whatever to a thousand five hundred is too much?
It depends.
I don't think so.
I mean, everybody's feedback is, is good, so I mean.
It depends who you ask? If you're the developer, I know, I, I'm, I know it doesn't look like it's too much, but I know the feeling because we deal with developers all the time.
We do.
And I know what their feeling is.
When was the last time we, um, bumped up the, the apartment? Can we recall how many years?
Probably twenty nineteen or twenty, early recently, so before this one thousand one hundred fifty, it used to be half of that, five seventy-five.
And the county is still at that.
Yeah, that's the main reason, because when, I mean, everybody jump up when you went, you increase it, you double it.
Yeah.
And that, the last time they increased it, it hasn't not even been four years or three years, right?
Twenty nineteen, twenty, somewhere around there, yeah. But I guess it, so in terms of percentages, it's a double, it's a huge jump up, but going back to cost.
The cost, yeah.
If we were taking five hundred seventy-five dollars, we were nowhere close to covering.
But it also took us years to get to, to the, what we currently have, because we haven't modified or, um, upgraded the fees in many, for many years. And I would say like depending on the phases, you get a, maybe you can come up with, or you can come up with something better that will attract for them, like in phases, like on these phases, instead of five acres, you know, maybe put like, kind of like a, um, restriction or something like smaller, like in one acre here, and then if you decide to continue on phase two, three, or whatever, depending on the number of lots, then another one, X amount of blocks. Like what's gonna have right now on that one that we just saw right now, it's so small that is, you have too many families with small children, it's not gonna have enough space for kids, for recreational areas in the afternoon. So maybe like in other cities where you have on the, on the entrance or in the bag, you might have another one, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, where is the detention pond? You have parks where the detention pond is.
This does cover and specify that is not, not acceptable to take, missing.
On the detention pond.
Yeah, this is a general.
Because we currently have one off of, in the Treasure Hills area.
Flowers.
And the maintenance, just to maintain it when we have the heavy rains.
Yeah.
Guessing that's.
That one and another one, uh, in Masquitas. It seems to be in detention.
Does the warehouse is affected?
Under the land requirements section on page, it starts on page four, but then it continues on to page five. Letter E. States detention retention areas may not be used to meet dedication requirements.
The logic behind it is like, like you were thinking, okay, what are you gonna, cause a lot of them might say just to avoid that land, they might end up with twenty-eight lots, you know. Instead of whatever minimum amount you have right now, I think it's thirty, right? For dedication apartment, it's fifty and more. Fifty and more, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not twenty-nine, I'm, forty-nine. But most of these people are gonna continue probably developing, they have more land and they're just gonna have phase one, phase two, phase three. Maybe instead of, um, providing you with a five acre land since the beginning of phase one, you might give them the option that when they when they finish phase one, they're gonna have to do a, at least a smaller one. Uh, one acre to dedicate for the park, just like this one we were talking about. And when you get to phase two or three or four. You can't dedicate land elsewhere, it has to be in the, the development site, correct? Yeah, development site, but it doesn't necessarily, cause in, in that, cause they do the floor plans and they do all the plans by phases.
Yeah, they do.
But then I would think, is it more expensive, cause then you're gonna have to spend the little gains or whatever in each one, instead of just one bigger one, I don't know, that's more costly in the maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be in close proximity, but.
So were, were you saying like parks, sections separated for phase?
Their areas and other cities that I've seen, that they have here and there, like when it's phase one, two, three, four, and we're talking about those kind of developments, you know what I'm saying?
So they can do, they don't have to do all the parkland upfront in the first phase.
They don't have to have the. Exactly.
I think it would make more sense though if it was all con, connected for maintenance purposes and just for having a bigger area to, for people to gather and do things, but they wouldn't have to do the, all of the park in first phase. We wouldn't require the whole.
I understood that the dedication had to be done in the first phase, maybe I'm wrong.
Before, for the full master plan area?
I, that's what I understood.
I need to, I need to double check that.
Maybe I'm wrong.
You may, you may be right, I'll either verify.
Because upfront, give me five acres.
Right, and then you're just like phase one.
That sounds a lot.
It is a lot, five acres is a lot. Not for the size of subdivision.
But then you have the thing where, well, I'm only gonna do phase one. And then they do phase two and three and four, and then we end up with that one small park and there is no land to do more.
That's why.
If, if they would have done the five acres from the beginning, then maybe it would be an appropriate size for that area.
If they acquire the land altogether.
And sometimes they keep acquiring from the neighbors or, you know, keep on buying adjacent land as it becomes available.
Yeah.
Unless you have developments like others that have big ranches, they're, they're getting development within the next few years, but. The way, from the
Developers.
Developers perception inside of you is like, I'm really gonna sell thirty-something lots and you're taking away from me five acres.
Yeah, so in the, in the smaller development, it would be the fee in lieu, we would have asked for five acres for thirty lots. Yeah, it's gonna be, I don't know, I don't remember the number, but I think one twenty-five. A larger number of total lots, master plan for, to get to that five acre area.
I would say have like a chart and comparisons and options for them, either option one, two, or three. In a way so they don't perceive this increment that you're proposing to be.
Against the developer.
Yes, good, yeah, it's a lot of good feedback, appreciate any other comments?
So just going back to, so page two, letter C, the last bullet. Maybe I'm missing something.
Page two.
The last bullet or letter C.
Where phase development, it's our partnership plan, concerning.
I'm understanding this, so the whole five acres will have to be dedicated when you do the first phase.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that's what that bullet says, so it's another point for consideration, everything in here is, is open. I mean, the more I think about it, I don't think it's as as difficult of a request, because if you have twenty acres, you're gonna do them in phases, that area for parks, is that area for parks, it's not gonna change whether you do all at once or one phase at a time, so I.
I mean, I'm thinking like, uh, Bass subdivision, that's a huge area and they already dedicated whatever acreage, and then you have the opposite in Perfecto Mancha Elementary where they have a lot of developments and you have a small park.
Yeah, those are the perfect examples, so that one, they decided, we're gonna give, and I, I think they started off with like eleven acres at first. So we're, we're planning to develop a huge number of lots, so we're gonna do all, like eleven acres of parkland right now. I think over time, it, they modified that and said, decided they were gonna develop as much, so I think the parkland was reduced to about seven acres. But yeah, they did that chunk and then they were done, so then every phase after that, it was already, the land was already set.
Because probably the land was unusable.
Yeah, cause a lot of that land is unusable, cause it's flood zone. And that's, other thing you need to consider is that when the development companies are not using their own money, they have to go through financing institutions. Either they go with the presentation of a portfolio and pre-sale of those lots, and if you're gonna take away five acres on phase one, it's gonna be difficult for them to show to a financial institution that they're gonna have whatever percentage already for them to get approved on the infrastructure and everything else, just for you to consider that.
Yeah, I mean, they would need, they would already own all the land, they're, they're coming forward with a phase one, they have to have a master plan for their full property, so they, they have thirty acres. That land was not being used already, so the five acres are dedicated upfront. I don't think it changes their taxes, I don't think it changes anything on their financing.
No, no, it's not the taxes, it's for the loan, for the loan to do the streets, sewer, water, all utilities, improvements.
And so plating and dedicating the land, you're, you're saying would cost or make it more difficult on the financing, I'm trying to understand that part.
But can, can you dedicate something outside of the phase one?
If they can establish something that, or, but not the five acres, you know what I'm saying?
Dicated when you do phase one, but, but the park doesn't have to be located in phase one.
I don't see anything that says it has to be located in phase one.
You can, you can do it on phase five, but when you do phase one, you have to say, in phase five, I'm gonna give you this. That's what I'm understanding.
But it already has to be given.
But it has to be.
You have to donate it off the map.
It's already planted and donated as parkland.
When you do phase one?
Yes.
Yes. Because first, there was a master plan before the. You can't control what's gonna happen in the future, so it has to be with the phase one. But the five acres, the way it is right now, it's two acres, right? There's a table to it, it's.
It's just per lot, so for every lot, there's times a formula.
What's the formula?
It was on here, I think, or was on the one before, no, was it?
Cause most of our, um, the newest ones have been like thirty-something. the newest ones have been like thirty-something lots. Most of them, they usually do it like that, specifically to avoid this, and, but if you saw in one acre, they can build, or, you know, standard sizes sixty by one ten lots, or fifty five or fifty wide, but you're gonna, they would have to give up, just in one acre, somewhere around eight to ten lots.
Yeah, but the alternative is subdivisions with no parks, and I don't think anybody wants that, I don't think that's really a suitable alternative, so.
Oh, I mean, if we do have parks, but not the five acres.
So five acres is for, like I said, I think over a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty lots, that that amount of acreage of parkland is for that amount of lots, not for thirty lots. If they're gonna overall do like a large number of lots, that's when it gets to the five acres.
Yeah, that's why he was saying not in phase one, right?
But that's not, those numbers are not in the draft. Because I don't think I saw anything that says if you do this number, then you have to do five acres. I think it just says the dedication of the park has to be five acres. So it doesn't say, I mean.
But it's, it's not in the wording, it's just the, the way it works out, so the the fees, so the, the wording that says five acres basically tells, gives the city the option then if it's not gonna be five acres, if it's not enough lots to equal that, then the city could say, well, just go ahead and give us the fees in lieu. But with the flexibility, if we want a smaller park, if the number of lots equals to one point five acres, but it's in an area the city wants a park, we can go ahead and accept the one point five.
So it says up to five or it is five acres?
It says normally will not accept parkland of less than five.
It says smaller than five acres.
No less than, so you're talking about minimum of five, I think that needs to be changed.
But it says normally. But it says normally, five.
What's normally?
Normally, every time.
We're getting into a lot of legal situations and.
So we, we, we went back and forth a little bit with the consultant here, because we were thinking of lowering it to three point five, and you'll see it in, in the notes that we
Oh, no, no.
we sent to him, and then he, he sent back.
Yeah, the red lines, I saw that.
Because that's closer to the norm, what we really see here, that's where our normal parks are, two, two and a half, I mean, even three and a half is bigger than our normal parks, but we're factoring in, the city is growing, like, we can't keep going with the one point one and two point.
Yeah, but three point five sounds more reasonable than five.
So three point five was where, yeah. That was, that was kind of what we were thinking too. Dr. Kowt had said, well, I don't think you should change the five, but the word normally gives you the option to change anyway, or to accept less anyway, so we could change it, I think we could
There's no language.
lower it if we want to, since we know our city and we typically don't see those, but
So what?
even if we don't change it, we still can accept smaller anyway.
Right, so what would happen if you change it to three point five and then you have something like, uh, Bass subdivision? Where they could, you could ask for more, but then you're gonna be limited to three point five. So it's gonna be the largest that you're gonna have.
It will be like minimum, uh, that's why they need to have some
Right, because.
parameters.
Like a proportion like you were saying.
In proportion to the number of land and the number of lots.
Because then if you put three point five, then that's all they're gonna give you, I don't think they're gonna be giving you more, just.
Sometimes developers will give more depending on the situation.
It depends.
But would, would they lose money if they give more?
No, because sometimes, uh, the land is unusable, so.
But that's, that's why we're talking about, they're not gonna be allowed to do it like on Flower Street that they did the park on a
No, not on a detention.
On a detention fund.
It's a, it's a difficult topic, and I'm glad we had a good conversation with it, there's a lot of good covers for me.
It's because we have to make sure that we are considering all the opinions from all the people, I mean, we all wanna have nice parks and for kids to run around.
And for them to be free.
Yes. But from the developers' perspective, and the way it is, because we've been working with several of them, they're in the process of, um, going on extensions on other phases. And just to present to a bank institution, because not all developers have their own money, not every people use their own money, they use money of other people, like the banks. And those investors, for any bank to, to lend you the money, besides reviewing the master plan, they wanna make sure, okay, how many lots? And, and they, they request from us and from them to have like an average per square foot on land, how much are you gonna sell this land?
Comparables.
Comparables, we need to do a, a full market analysis for them, based on facts and recent comparables on recent sales. And if we tell them, okay, you're gonna take away five acres, that means that, eight times five, like, they could have built or sold forty lots, average, on phase one, so what else do they have left to sell? Because they need to have either even contracts as pre-sales for them to get the loan approved, just to just to start with the, the, for them to get the money for the installation of utilities and everything else you see, construction of the streets.
So they could just pay the fee? And budget it into the loan?
Yeah, but we also want to have parks. We want it all. On the north side, which is the most recent park that have been added?
Like an actual park?
Because the ones we have, they're, they're.
They've been established, like there are flowers.
The Hondo, that's been for years.
Flowers may be one of the more recent, I can't think of anything newer in that area.
That's already developed, it's the flowers.
Yeah, because a lot of the development around Junior High, there's nothing else across, outside of North Veterans, there's no parks up there. Very good, so we'll take those comments, we'll, we'll, we'll work on the table to get some comparable parkland fees from other cities, specifically go over the rate, we'll make sure those are in there. We'll have several, I mean, but we'll make sure those are there.
I mean, there was one, I know it was working, but I don't know how big it was.
You can check with Del Rio.
Maybe one of them.
I don't wanna check with, I mean, because of proximity.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to see, or, um, can you remind me anything else you wanna know for when we come back, the special meeting later this month? The table, what was?
The clearing of the land, do you want that on the ordinance, or is it just gonna be kind of like, that's just a practice?
Okay, we'll check, we'll take a look at that and also see if we can find what the wording is in other cities, if they accepted raw land, or they ask it for it to be
Clearly.
leveled or whatnot, so we'll see what other cities do for that. I thought there was, you had several questions, did you, was there anything else that was like for us to research? The five acres, I guess you want us to look at that a little bit more closely?
Do you have a five acres and like the, the fee, like if other cities get more?
Because that would help you when you do the presentation in front of all these developers.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you can show that, hey, I mean, we're not that high compared to other cities, and that helps you if you're trying to get this.
The other thing we talked about a lot was the phase in all the land upfront, is that something that you're considering to be to do in phases, donate the land in phases, or what do you wanna look at?
No. No, they would have to donate the land upfront.
But not five?
But not.
Okay, so.
Or depending on the lots or size.
Well, or I guess maybe you could.
Yeah, depending on the size of like the whole.
Subdivision proposed for phase one?
The whole master plan, yeah.
Yeah, because it's not the same if it's just like a twenty lot than a more than fifty or whatever you. But I would say the, the last ones we had, they're not that big, right? They're less than fifty?
Yeah, almost all the time, I think there's been one, maybe that's about fifty or above fifty lately, but forty, mid thirties, sometimes even twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I've seen twenty-nine, thirty-two.
I think there's nothing more than thirty-six.
No, I thought the last one was like forty-something, but it's been years. And the rest are usually in the mid thirties or high twenties, twenty, twenty-nine, thirty-two.
That's the average.
How long does it usually take, or what are your plans, I don't know, let's say we have, um, a new subdivision approved, you know, master plan, everything is ready to go, and they decide to donate the land. Uh, how long does it usually take for the city to start with the construction of the park?
Well, till now, there's no funds.
That's a problem.
So it's trying to budget or get funds or borrow funds.
Yes.
Oh, are you saying just on ha- on average, how long has it been taking? I don't, I would, if I had to get, I don't have the, those figures, but if I just estimated at least three, four years minimum.
So via Romel, you already started developing that park?
It's been designed, and if I'm not mistaken, the next step will be is the selection of a contractor to do the work, so the planning has already been in place, and then it's, uh, selection of a contractor.
And then the park and Bass subdivision, that's been years.
No.
No, it hasn't been that long.
Well, since the first, uh, I don't remember the street.
Oh, Bass, sorry.
It's, it's been, I would guess ten, I don't know.
About ten, twelve years.
That one's been a while.
I was thinking those real savinas.
Because it's been dedicated and, I mean, there's, there's Bass.
One of the issues with that one is that, kind of how you made a comment about the parkland didn't have to be adjacent to the phase, so that's why the, the land was not connected, so even with the phases, or all the phases that are done to now, they're still not connected, there's still not a street that gets you to that parkland. So that's also a big part of the issues with that one, is the city's not ready to prioritize funds for that, when there's not even a road for people to go to it.
Right. Yeah.
So we were, the city was basically planning and being ready for once that next phase came, we were, we were expecting another phase of Bass that was gonna get to that parkland, and then we're gonna do some improvements there for it. But that, that development phase didn't come, so we had to hold off, and I believe those funds that just were reallocated because would need, they wanted to do something with those funds while we wait for that next phase.
In my opinion, I think it's just better to have the land than end up with a park like Perfecto Mancha. Or at least you have something, even if it's not developed, but there's something in there. Maybe in the future, you can develop it.
But then where you would get the funds, or would you get the?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, just wait until there, there are funds.
But from what I, what you mentioned is they, they dedicate the land, they still have to pay the, the nine hundred and something fee?
Per lot.
Per lot.
Yeah.
And the goal is so that.
So there's, there's no way around that fee?
That one, no. That one would be set.
But you can ask for various.
And there still wouldn't be possibly enough to do the improvements, but there would be some funds, I guess we would be closer.
Half a park.
Well, like nine seventy-two times, let's say thirty, I mean, that's under thirty thousand dollars, right? It's nowhere close.
Well, then they're gonna brainstorm other ways to get money, not just from the little.
I think so.
Right?
Yeah. Take it from the bridge.
And then you all get fees from, for the replats too, right? But it's not much.
No, but we won't, we haven't been keeping the, the funds for, anything in ETJ, we don't collect. The county collects.
Well, the thing is that this is the only city where the
Well, I mean, not like the pool.
The, the waterworks is separate, they collect more than you guys. Sorry, but that's true, those are facts.
Waterworks?
Waterworks, and they have another fee per lot, higher than what you're collecting?
They, but they got water impact fee and some meter fees that they have.
I think it's like two hun- twenty-two hundred per lot, I wanna say, maybe?
Um, if it's the total top, I think it's like twenty to twenty-four hundred, and then if it's already pre-tapped, it's fourteen eighty-eight.
Okay, any other comments? I think we got a lot of good input and we'll have some more information for
No.
two weeks from today?
Yes, sir.
We can hopefully make some more progress then.
All right, um, there's no action on the item, right?
No.
All right, so I guess, uh, there's no other items in the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I second.
Second, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourn, I mean, uh, meeting adjourned, seven oh five PM.